It's five o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting of the. Water.
Hey, it is Monday, June tenth at five o'clock. I'd like to call the village trustees to order for this joint meeting. Are there any additions or additions from the agenda?
Uh, no, but I'd like to change the presentation to the personal policy first, all by my presentation, if that's okay.
So, okay, so under presentation, just personnel and then.
Yeah, the personal policy, so like me and then.
Okay. Okay, trustees, any other additions or additions? Moving on, uh. Citizens comments, are there any citizen comments in the room or on Zoom? Got all ten of us in one place. This is your opportunity. Okay. Then let's move on to discussion, uh, IT update.
Yeah, so, um, as both boards know, last year we contracted with, uh, the town of Hanover in New Hampshire, uh, to provide IT services for the municipality. Uh, going on to year two, July one, um, we tried to set this up probably last September and time is now worked out on either one of our parts. Um, so we have Alex as the town manager of Hanover here today to kind of give us a quick presentation and answer any questions. Uh, but I'll just say on my end, it has been a great help to have them evolve with us. Um, as the board's aware, in the past, we just had a consultant, uh, which caused a few issues. One, we never could budget for it because I never knew how much it was going to cost. Because it was an hourly rate each time we called them. Uh, second, there was, um, a concern about using them because we didn't want to charge the money. So department heads would spend their own time trying to fix their laptop, trying to fix an email issue, uh, potentially viruses and all that fun stuff. Uh, and third, there was a lack of oversight and planning because it was kind of I had Hawk who would call him, who was in charge of him. Um, so despite him doing good work, I thought it was nice to have kind of more reliable service setup. Uh, what we budget for, so it's a set cost, so it doesn't cost us any extra money. If we call them one time a day or ten times a day, um, there have been two gentlemen that have been very helpful with us. Um, they set up a workflow, so we have issues, we can actually just go online, submit a ticket, and then they can work. They've come out here numerous times and how we need to, they help with EEI and the work there, uh, they're helping us prep for our new employee. Uh, so I found it very helpful, very useful, uh, makes things for us a little bit easier throughout it. So I've been very happy, uh, with that. I'll turn it over to Alex.
You want me to come up here?
Yeah, be great.
Thank you for having me here. I appreciate it. I know we wanted to get together as Eric mentioned a little while ago. I just brought a couple like stats that my folks from the IT department gave me that I can just read out if it's helpful, and then I'm happy to share a little bit about, um, um, anything else that you'd like to ask about or anything else that I can, uh, kind of help inform. Um, so a couple of the kind of like, uh, work activities from the last year, and I'll just say too, from my perspective as a town manager, but also from my IT director and our IT specialist perspective, they've really enjoyed coming out here. Um, obviously, um, you know, it's always like kind of interesting for folks that find it interesting, like getting into a new organization, figuring out what the issues are, trying to help people kind of get on board and all that. Um, and so they have enjoyed that and have appreciated working with all the staff that they have worked with. Um, so we brought forty-five, uh, desktops and laptops, um, sort of into a more managed ecosystem. I mean, that includes also getting antivirus installed on all of those computers, um, and setting up software so that they can actually remote in and troubleshoot certain issues remotely, so they don't have to come out here. Um, Hanover does provide, um, we have a dispatch center, a regional dispatch center that's run through our police department. Um, we provide nine-one-one dispatching and, um, and after-hours dispatching, um, for twenty-two towns in New Hampshire and Vermont. Um, and so this was sort of a, um, kind of a natural follow-on, um, from our perspective, because we have a lot of sort of shared regional infrastructure in place, um, already. So we brought forty-five computers into that kind of ecosystem. Um, we got, um, I know we got a new laptop, uh, for Eric, a new desktop for the fire chief, a new computer set up in the dispatch center, um, as well. We got three new tough books set up in different police cruisers. Um, we got five that were set up in, uh, so as part of an energy efficiency program that I'm not super familiar with, but I'm sure Eric is. Um, and I know we set up some, uh, copiers and printers for the listers and for planning as well. Um, and we processed a couple dozen like help desk tickets and requests for service, troubleshooting issues, um, things like that. And so I think part of, you know, was sort of responding to questions, concerns, troubleshooting, but part of it is also, um, you know, I've worked in a couple of different towns. Um, it is helpful coming off of this sort of situation, um, that you all were here, uh, with your IT before, having a fresh set of eyes come in and kind of like, give you a little bit of a sense of where things stand. You know, twenty or thirty years ago, obviously it wasn't as big of an issue, but like, pretty much everything we do today runs through some sort of piece of hardware or software. Um, and so if those things go down, it can obviously really complicate operations, and there's obviously, of course, liability and things associated with, um, you know, hacking and stuff like that as well, which happens more than, um, I think any of us would like to think, including to municipal governments and to police departments. Um, so I know, uh, Corey Stevens and Michael, um, are our two IT folks have just been really, um, happy with everything. Um, you know, like Eric mentioned, the way that we set up the contract, and I'm, I'm sure you shared it, I'm sure you all reviewed the RFP and the response that we provided when you all selected us about a year ago, um, but that unlimited help desk piece was actually really important. Um, and you know, took, we had to kind of make sure all the scheduling worked on our end, but it's really important that staff don't think, well, I have a computer problem, but is this going to cost, you know, another fifty dollars if I call somebody? Like, you don't want staff, you know, if they, if they think there's a phishing issue or a virus, like, you want someone immediately calling and trying to figure out, you know, how, we can figure out whatever the issue is. So hopefully we've created that environment. Um, you know, we are, uh, you know, we're interested in renewing, um, you know, for additional years. Um, and if there's feedback that I can take back to our IT staff, uh, you know, things that we could do, I'm happy to do that as well. Um, but happy to speak to anything.
One thing I'd just add too is, uh, we're starting to work with them on kind of revamping this room and what we can do meaning-wise and make it more efficient, more better, a better, so that's kind of a long-term goal we have with them as well.
And if it's, um, we, so we haven't talked about that yet, Eric, but, um, you know, we have two, uh, Zoom rooms that we set up in our library and that our IT did, and they are like super, is cameras and microphones and speakers and the ceiling and walls, and I'm sure some of you have seen that in some places, and um, so it allows our library to do like really, really, um, uh, like well-integrated public meetings, and so stuff like that is also stuff we're happy to help with.
How much is the help desk used?
Uh, presently, I've used it a lot. Um, I had to be trained on it first. I kept on calling them and emailing them, and they had to redirect me to the help desk. Uh, but I use it significantly in other employees' as well. Uh, we've got a number of families, we've submitted tickets if you'd like.
We've got about two dozen, um, I think, tickets, but many more emails and phone calls, which I make the same mistake with my IT department, which is not always putting the ticket in correctly and just saying, hey, can you fix this thing? And then, then they put the ticket in, so it doesn't track all of that. It's just the, it's just the initial tickets that went in. So, so, so I would guess probably around maybe, I don't know, maybe forty, fifty, like troubleshooting things, which if you're on like an on-demand or pay-per-time, you know, you're probably paying more for the service just for the ticketing, you know, not to mention all the other sort of, um, proactive stuff, getting the computer set up. But we like, we like, um, ticket usage because it means that people are reaching out with questions. And, and again, that's the biggest thing. You know, we started doing a phishing, uh, training program with all of our users, um, where, um, it's through our Outlook, uh, you know, system, and it sends people like fake phishing messages. And if you click on one, then you kind of get moved into this other pathway where you kind of have, you have to do a training. Um, and I'll say, it is, it is shocking, the failure rate on the first one, it was like half of the organization clicked on the phishing email. And now when they send out like the fake ones, you get, you know, we have about, um, probably on our email ecosystem, there's probably about a hundred sixty or so people on there, um, like in our Outlook, and you might get a couple people each time. So it had a huge difference, and, you know, like if you ask any IT person, like what's the weakest point of your network? The user. And so, um, you know, getting all that kind of worked up and, you know, we can always, like, if there are specific programs like the Zoom stuff or phishing, like, we're always happy to sort of design some stuff around like a specific program too.
Great. Thank you.
Coming in last year, what was, what was your biggest challenge coming in here? What was it? You looked and you were like, oh dear God, the first thing they should do is X.
Um, so I will say, I have a technology background, though I'm not, you know, a full like IT person. Um, so from my perspective and in my conversations with the IT folks, a couple things. I think the biggest part is not having a managed ecosystem, and what I mean by that is, you know, every computer, you know, in a database, we know when the last software update was applied, we know when the computer was purchased, we know when it's going to be, um, when it needs to be replaced. Like, having all of that really well mapped out is really important because it also, obviously, I do a lot of the budget stuff as well, and it's nice to have the sort of, whether you purchase through operating or capital, to be able to know, okay, we've got X many desktops, they last, you know, however many years now, three or four years, so you can plan things out a little bit more. Um, so it can help a little bit in that regard, but I think that was one of the bigger issues was just that there wasn't really a centralized kind of, um, database of kind of where everything stood. And then I know, I believe, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe uh, most of your services are in the cloud, like there's not a ton of stuff on hardware in the building, which is in many ways a good thing because then you don't have to worry about backing things up as much. But I think the antivirus, which I think is now on all of the Woodstock computers, that was another thing, having that one layer. So they use Bitdefender. Um, and that sometimes, you know, grab you if you hit a link that's a, you know, going to a bad site or something as well. Um, so I think that was a big one. Um, the la, the database kind of not having everything up to date, and then I think it's people, um, you know, and I don't have the day-to-day experience of it, but people running into an issue and not really being able to get a solution, you know, so that you might have someone like who has a problem. Sure, we all do this sometimes, but you're just sort of like, all right, well, you know, I'm, I'll, I'll do that later. And then you never really do it, but it, you know, it messes up your workday, and you've got staff that your taxpayers are paying, you know, and we want people to work efficiently, and if someone's stuck on some issue, you know, um, uh, so that's, they can now, you know, put that help desk in, and hopefully we've been responsive to all of those things. Um, you know, they can do a lot of that remotely and then come out every once in a while. But so I, I would say those were probably the biggest, the biggest issues, the sort of replacement plan, um, you know, having either whether the backup or security in place. And then I think as you do more stuff, if you're doing more Zoom room type things, um, you know, we can also talk more about, uh, you know, firewall, you know, things that provide additional security, you know, to the network, but because so much stuff here is in the cloud, um, the risk there is a little bit lower, whereas some towns that I've worked in, um, try not to like tell stories here, um, but I know you've got a long agenda, but one of the towns I was in, you know, they, we had, it was all servers in-house, and they were in a closet, and the cooling for the closet was a giant, um, box fan that was just plugged into an outlet. So if the power went out, the fan went out, which like, I might question how well that fan was working anyway, you know, on a good day. Um, and I remember seeing that and just, and just, and I was like, okay, well, we have to like fix this like today, like this is really, and that was like our email server, our website, all of that was hosted in-house, so that was not good. Um, but you, but you all don't have that issue, so that's nice.
And then I just have one more question.
Sure.
Um, so it seems like you've got the ecosystem all set up for the town, so there are those of us that are not in town employees, but certainly are doing town work, town business, um, a lot of times from our Gmail or whatever.
Right.
Have you run into anything in Hanover or anybody else that you've worked with that are like best practices or things that we should be looking out for because we could contaminate the other emails or whatever? Is that, are there things that we should be thinking about or trainings that we should be taking?
So that's a great question, and I'll give a little caveat, which is, you know, New Hampshire, I mean, I, they're, they're similar in many ways, but a little different, but I think probably pretty similar. I think there's a policy decision that you all can make with Eric as far as who you want to extend and bring into the ecosystem. You know, I would certainly say it's, it's, it starts costing money. I mean, we're going through this right now with all of our boards and committees, which is, um, it's different than, um, oh, I knew it, I'm now forgetting the, the law and our, our equivalent for public records in Vermont. Um, but, um, you know, if you put every board member and every committee member, I mean, you'd be spending like thousands and thousands of dollars a month just on email, so. So we're do, you know, we're probably looking at something, we haven't, we haven't worked it all out yet, but for example, where each committee, so, you know, all of our different advisory committees and boards might have one town email address that the co-chairs or chairs have access to. And then if people want to copy that email address, that then puts it into our email ecosystem, so then if we need to do a, a records request, we can go search for it. Rather than extending, you know, twelve email addresses to everybody on the fifteen different like committees. You know, I think that that's something we could certainly, if you all wanted to move in, um, into that ecosystem, we could certainly help with that, like as far as setting up email addresses for all the board members. Um, and from a phishing and security standpoint, it is a good idea, um, even beyond the record stuff, because one of the sort of phishing attacks is if you have a personal email, right, the town has no way to control, you know, your password could be password. Um, hopefully nobody says, but, um, uh, you know, it could be that, right, whoops, sorry. Um, and, um, and that means that if your email, and I've seen this happen in other, uh, it has not happened in Hanover, but it has happened in other towns I've worked in, where someone's personal email address gets hacked, and then it gets into your, basically your address book and sends out stuff to everybody. So then what happens is employees or somebody in the town environment is getting an email with your name on it and saying, oh, I need to, and it's usually like, uh, you know, I need you to look at this budget, you know, it's something that sounds like urgent or something. And then people, you know, don't even think, they don't even think to look at the email address and see that it's Gmail, but if, but if you're using personal email, basically it just increases the risk, because right now, you know, I mean, we, our select board was in personal emails up until a year ago. We moved everybody into the, our Outlook system, you know, which helps with calendars and document stuff too. But now if someone gets an email from like a board member or an official and it's from a personal account, and people do it, and it's actually really nice. I mean, people will, you know, bring their phone over and say, does this look legit? And I'm like, it does not. Um, and so it's really nice to have that like extra layer, and we could definitely help give some advice on that, you know, we could cost things out. Um, just to give you ideas. Um, if you say, okay, here's a plan, and you say that's too expensive, you know, we could think of alternatives, for example.
Thank you.
So we're happy to do that, yeah.
Other questions?
I'm just curious, from, um, like, obviously there's like the device management and the ecosystem, are there also like business application recommendations in terms of efficiency that you would recommend or like have your eye on for us, obviously knowing that different from Vermont, and maybe our needs are different, but wondering if, seeing as you are also a municipal government, there are tools we don't know about that we could use for some of our departments or systems, you know, currently.
We could totally, um, have that conversation. I think there are, I think, I would say, um, there are tools and applications, especially in Outlook that are really useful. I think there are some that are less useful, and I would say, uh, and it's easy to go down a road where you like spend all your time, especially, it sounds like maybe a couple of you work in some or with some tech-related stuff like, you know, like Microsoft has like four different project management tools. You know, there's like Microsoft Task, Microsoft Planner, Microsoft Projects, and they're all different, and they're all, so, so, you know, one of the things that we could certainly do is, is, you know, work with Eric to identify, like if there are efficiency improvements there and say, okay, here are the tools that are out there, we could then sort of, because we do a lot of stuff in our Outlook ecosystem, we could say, here's the products that Microsoft offers, here are alternatives, you know, one of the ones that are, you know, starting to be talked about more are the, you know, generative AI, like ChatGPT related things that we're just starting to like use a little bit. Um, and we're going to put a policy in place that limits that usage to kind of certain things and requires, like if you're creating original content, um, but using ChatGPT that, you know, that the employee discloses that if they're, you know, so, I mean, I don't know how teachers and students are dealing with this today, uh, like in K through twelve, but, um, so there are some things like that, but also, you know, uh, like, for example, ChatGPT extremely useful, uh, you know, I would say I'm an okay person with Microsoft Excel, but some of the really complex stuff, like I just don't know how to do, and I have saw, I've like done really complicated things with Excel by troubleshooting what I'm trying to work on in ChatGPT, so they're not producing any content, but it's basically a better version than Microsoft's help system, which I find very confused, sometimes more confusing. So I was trying to run some analyses for an HR project for our select board, and I couldn't figure out how to do the formulas, and I go into chat, he's like, oh, I do this, and it gave me three options, and I tried one of them and didn't do it quite right, and put it back in, and it corrected the formula, and then I put it back in and it all worked. So things like that are really nice because, um, uh, you know, again, if someone's banging their head against the wall trying to figure something out, you know, or they're going to another employee and, and they're spending thirty minutes trying to figure something out, and you can just do it in two minutes online, I mean, that could be a nice thing. And, and, uh, so anyway, there's things like that that we could definitely do. Um, you know, I would certainly, um, recommend just off the cuff, you know, obviously beyond the email, just the document collaboration and the calendars, and people really using calendars well, you know, putting in you, if you use the appointment feature where you can set blocks of time, which sometimes some staff know about, some don't. So you can say, okay, I'm available for meetings for these four hours, and then people can just go book time on your calendar directly. So there's like all these different things, and, you know, we're happy to brainstorm, happy to provide any advice, costs, alternative, stuff like that. There's, there's some good options there. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, well, thank you. Yeah, thanks, and thanks for the support, um, in Hanover and, and doing the shared service with us. I think it's a great thing to do, and, you know, my own personal opinion, and I think Eric and I go to a lot of, you know, municipal management meetings, and the more that we can work together as towns, I think we just get better and better value for the taxpayers, and so, um, big fan of that, so thanks for doing that.
Thank you. Thanks for being on our chain.
Yeah, I'm happy to, yeah.
And I, I hear you're discussing audits next.
Do you not go to enough public meetings?
I know, you know, yeah, our, our select were being for Monday nights, so I'm in my, you know, schedule. But thank you all.
Thank you, Alex.
Item on the agenda is a vote on the Vale Field agreement.
Yep, so, um, a longstanding agreement, uh, verbally, I believe, that the rec center would, uh, do the maintenance of Vale Field and use it despite it being a village property. Um, on the assumption that, uh, in the town budget, money we allocated to the rec center, um, I thought it was important to kind of codify that into an agreement, uh, legal document. Uh, so I worked with Gail, kind of put some together. Um, I know some board members have mentioned some changes, uh, edits and whatnot that we can get into. Um, but I thought it'd be important for the both boards to review and then, and vote to make sure we have it kind of set up the way it should be. Um, to make sure that beyond this board and beyond me, you know, there are agreements in place that people can revert back to.
I have a question.
Yep.
Under two responsibilities to the town of Woodstock, what does, shall provide necessary support to the rec or Vale Field management? But.
So that's a great example is, uh, we had DPW out there a few weeks ago to move, um, some stuff off the river that they need, they need help with. So kind of big projects we go out there and help them with, um, the day-to-day stuff, they take care of it.
Or replacing that bridge.
Yes, exactly. Things that they can, they can, they, they do things that need a larger help, but we're there for it. Yep, Susan, then.
Yeah, and as I emailed you, I think we just need to be consistent and say WRC instead of rec.
Yeah, but I have those on mine that I'll, I'll update afterward, yeah. And Laura, I think you wanted to move the fourth bullet point under number one to number two, correct?
It just seemed like, um, that maybe the fourth point under one and the third point under two were
The same, yeah.
Um, but I also would like to add a provision for, for the rec giving us and for the Woodstock Recreation Center giving us estimates maybe on a regular basis, so we can make sure we're like budgeting appropriately. Um, and I'd also maybe suggest that the second bullet point under one holds authority over decisions related to the utili, utilization and design of the space as long as it's consistent with zoning bylaws, or, you know.
Yeah.
Whatever.
And they are, because they're going through that right now.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so I think to Laura, your, your first point about the budget, uh, the line which we discussed agreed upon each budget cycle, I thought that would be a good way, so when we do the next budget, the rec center can come in front of the board and say, here's a cost, so she's wait next year of maintaining Vale Fields. The boards can then say, that's appropriate, that's, I mean, that's too high, justify it, and that'd be a good chance to
Yeah.
use then.
So maybe the fourth point under one should be something like they provide the estimates. Third point remains the same, or like we allocate the, we allocate the budgetary resources
Okay.
at, at the discretion of the select board. Or, 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 how do you do it?
Are there any other comments, suggestions on that? Agreement as a whole?
So with our insurance, so I, I see that under their responsibilities, they have to do the insurance coverage for the sports. We have sort of like an overall insurance?
Yeah, so a good example is after the floods, um, their insurance claims came through our insurance, not through theirs.
Okay.
And so the many.
Right.
Yeah, well, the, the major one where it caused, uh, most severe damages.
So, so when, so when I sign my kid up to, to play soccer through the rec and I sit, and I sign off on the, the thing that says I'm not going to sue, or whatever, wherever they have me sign, my kid breaks their leg, um. Does that cover? Does that say you're not going to sue the, the rec center and you're also not going to sue the town, or does their liability waiver for sports just cover that?
I'd have to look at what the liability waiver is, but my first assumption probably just covers them, I'm guessing.
Because if we have insurance on it and it's well, wasn't the, you know, people will go after who has, who have the, the bigger pot of money. Um, and so I would just add, add something or however you see fit, that whenever they are allowing something to happen, that that the town gets written into any liability waiver so that we're not held uh, for those things.
I think just a, a, a profit.
Yeah, excuse me.
If, if the town is responsible, insurance for that, I think that we should go over there and take a look around. Uh, because my son was recently over there and said that there's a lot of posts that are sticking up out of the ground that are really dangerous.
With the full thing, hi.
No, I don't believe that's what it is.
Right.
Um, I think that we should investigate all of us and take a look at it and, and make an assumption before we proceed forward with this to make sure that we are aware of what, um, we're up against as far as hazards.
Okay.
And maybe eliminating the hazards.
There's a queue. Sustains, you all have anything else on them?
Select board?
Frank?
Nope.
No. So if those changes are made, are you happy signer? Do you want to come back in front of the boards after those changes are made?
I mean, ideally, I'd like to see it all updated. Of course I would. Laura's nodding too, Laura's nodding too.
I, I'll host everybody, everybody can get coffee at my house.
I'll bring donuts. And I'm almost ready to. Field trip. Field trip meeting. We don't have outside. Anything else about?
No, I'll make those changes.
Do you know when I just popped the topic, do you know when the bridge is going to be ready?
Uh, no, it's been postponed until we get the new director of public works in.
Can I bridge the property with?
I believe so, yes.
It is. Uh, next item on our agenda is audit review of the town and the village.
So Tyler, uh, is on Zoom, who is the auditor again, uh, this year. Um, so I don't know if we want to do village first, half an hour for the village, half an hour. Um, takes that long. Um, Tyler, are you there?
I am, how are you guys?
Good.
Good.
Uh, so we'll turn it over to you.
All right, um, well, thanks again for, for having us back. Um, I had to really refresh my memory before this meeting, say, okay, what all happened, let's decide it. Um, so I guess I'll start with the village, because that'll probably be quicker than the towns. Um, and if, if you guys want me to go the other, in the other direction, that's fine too, just go ahead and speak up. Um, so anyway, for the village, um, the, the report format, um, that you see this for FY twenty-three is going to be very similar to twenty-two. Um, I think just overall, and this applies for both the town and the village, um, you know, there was obviously a pretty big shift in, in the accounting function between, you know, Zoe to, um, you know, to, oh my gosh.
Robert.
Robert, thank you, wow.
He is here, you heard that, Tyler, just in town.
We, we have talked, we, we're good. I meant to say, Robert, it's been a, been a long day. Um, yes, and, um, you know, just, just that is a big, uh, change, and then obviously, the town and village accounting system is not, um, I mean, as you guys know, you know, it's not, it's not simple, right? It's not, it's not small. Um, there are a lot of accounts. There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on. Um, so all in all, I gotta say, uh, Robert's, I, I think really done a good job. Um, I think the one I think the one thing that you'll see reflective in the town report is just the single audit and that was a whole new ball of wax for the town. I mean, they have been, they have had a single audit in the past, but this was kind of a, you know, an initial year, the last one was several years ago. So it's been a while since it's had a single audit. So that introduced a whole new set of rules and reporting. So some issues came up there. But back for the village, the village did not need a single audit. So that was good news. The timing of the audit, it started in November. There was a lot of, it was a lot of help by Cynthia from Nemrick, who really helped, you know, pull the trial balance together, pull schedules for the audit together. Obviously, Robert was was involved with that. So, you know, the the trial balance got got to us for a little later than normal, but all in all, it finished up around the same time it did last year. I'm hopeful that, you know, an audit in the future would go smoother now that Roberts had, you know, one year under his belt of the audit process. And obviously, he's going to have more insight and knowledge on the chart of accounts and the accounting structure at the town and village. I would think the next audit would go a lot smoother than this one did and a lot probably more efficient, too. But as for the village, there really weren't any new changes to accounting standards that applied to the village. We did have a few proposed audit adjustments, but nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. There's always some activity in the permanent fund that has to get recorded in Nemrick. The inner funds, just the way that town and the villagers set up, they're all in one general ledger and not split out between two different ones. So there's some activity that just has to get broken out for reporting. Now that way you separate the town activity and the village activity. Record amounts due to and from the village since the cash is all pooled in the town's general fund. So that was, you know, an audit adjustment there. There was some activity that we proposed for the Veevers pension plan, just updating that information based off of actuary reports and auditor reports from the state. There were a couple of adjustments with relation to cumulative depreciation and the related depreciation expense. That was just based off of the schedules that we got from Robert and Cynthia. And the accrued compensated absences, that was just a small update there to match up with the schedules that we got for the audit. So all in all, the village went pretty smooth. No, no findings to report. No significant difficulties. So all in all, we'd say the village shot, it went pretty smooth. And, you know, I'm happy to go into more details with the village if you want, or I can just jump straight to the town. I'm not sure if folks have questions, I'm happy to, happy to dig in. Issues.
Jeffrey?
I've got a question. I've I've got a question in terms of revenue sources for the village. On all of the different revenue pages, I'm trying to find where the Rockefeller Investment Fund, which comes into the village, a portion of it every year as a as a revenue source. I don't, I don't know why it doesn't show up under a long list of revenues, although it's kind of hidden somewhere else. But are you familiar with what I'm talking about? It's usually about $10,500.
Yes. It is going to be, if you look on page thirty eight, you will see the, actually, it'll be second column to the, so from the far right, second column back, it's called Endowment Fund. There's a, there's a separate account column for it. That's page on on page thirty eight. What you'll see there is the change in that, in the villages portion of the Rockefeller money. And then you'll see a little farther down in that column, the transfer out, $11,000.
Why is that listed anywhere as income on the revenue pages?
So on page thirty eight, you'll see the total column on the far right. And that is going to include all these columns, you know, prior to that, the endowment fund, that Rockefeller money. So that that total column, you will then see in the in the fund statements. So that's, that's the information that you would see. This page here, page thirty eight breaks it out. So you can kind of see, okay, what all is that made up of?
Yeah, I see it on that page. Thank you. I just don't see it in the revenue page.
Yeah. So then if you looked at page, just look over to it. If you look over to page sixteen, you would see the the permanent fund, if you will. So that column is going to match the total column of that schedule that we were just looking at on page thirty eight.
Oh, I see. Interfund transfers in? Is that what you're talking about?
Uh, no, no, I was just.
So it matches the $19,000?
Correct. Yeah, it would be in there, right? So then you'll see in that section how they all kind of balance out. You know, just basically that $19,000 thing going. Then if you look at the general fund column, you'll see the 19,000 transfer in, you know, matching, netting it out.
All right. Thank you.
Just any other question? Frank, do you have any questions? Tyler, sometimes when we've done these audits at the end, had recommendations for improvement for the next year. Did you have any for the village?
I think just, you know, with the staff, you know, with Robert now on board, you know, at the moment, I don't have anything. I think, you know, maybe in a next year audit, there might be something. Something might come up. But honestly, from what I've seen so far, I think things are looking good. I do have to comment, you know, Robert, he does seem to have a really good accounting foundation under his belt, which is really good, something that's kind of critical for down here. So I, at this point, no, I don't have anything to to recommend.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Town people?
Tyler, do I move on to the town audits?
Sure. Yeah, let me start. You know, town reports are going to look very similar to the villages. I'll start with this three-page governance letter. It kind of gives the highlights of everything. The timing of the town audit was was very similar to the villages. Actually, the towns got done a little sooner than the villages, really because there was a reporting deadline with the Federal Audit Clearinghouse since the town needed a single audit. So this audit was done right on April first, the deadline for that submission to the Federal Audit Clearinghouse. So that was good. So everything got submitted on time. Nothing was late there. No new accounting standards that really hit the town in in a significant way. There were some audit adjustments. There were more audit adjustments in the village, but there's also a lot more activity going on in the town than the village. And in terms of what all we proposed adjustments on, it's really pretty similar to years past, permanent fund activity. Just just getting that activity mashed up in Nemrick with the supporting schedules that the trustee maintains. Inner funds and transfers between the town and the village, you know, it's just, it's all in one general ledger, some some breakout has to happen for the statements and the and all that. The sewer fund, there was some asset depreciation activity that we adjusted there. And activity relating to the Veemer pension plan, just, you know, adjusting to actuary reports and a few other reports from the state we get. That pretty much is a significant, those, I mean, those were the significant adjustments in the town. We did adjust some of the ambulance activity. But that wasn't anything crazy. The the ambulance activity is tracked in a separate system from Nemrick. So sometime, normally, historically, the two systems do not talk to each other. So some adjustments have to get proposed normally to just match the two systems up. So that's really why that's happening. And you will see that the town needed a single audit for fiscal year twenty three, which is definitely a change from years past. I think the last single audit was I want to say fiscal year seventeen. That might not be correct, but it was a while ago. Either way, so this was kind of a new thing. And then, of course, Robert being new, so he had to go through the single audit. That was a whole nother, whole nother curve ball. So we did have some, some findings in the town that you'll see here on the last page of this governance letter, just kind of summarized. I'll flip over to the actual findings that you'll find starting on pages. So pages seventy four, seventy five and seventy six. And I'll just mention the first one. I mean, it's not a huge issue, but all the same, it was late. There's a report that the town needs to file with the Vermont Department of Finance and Management within forty five days after the town's year end. This report was filed fifty two days after the town's year end. So it was late, not by a lot, but it was late. So either way, that was, that was one instance of non-compliance that we noted. That was this finding number twenty twenty three zero zero one that starts on page seventy four. And then relating to the single audit, we had two findings there. Start with the first one, this twenty twenty three oh oh two. The major program for the town single audit was this clean water state revolving fund relating to the sewer project that's going on there at the town. And basically, the issue here was that the the schedule of federal expenditure, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards that we got, you know, to audit, it included amounts that were not federal. So that was pretty much the issue there. The uniform guidance is pretty clear that you've got a total, the federal awards expended, you don't, I mean, if you're going to include state amounts or non-federal amounts, you need to be clearly separated. And in this case, they were not. They were just clumped in with the program expenditure amount. So that was what this first find or this this finding twenty twenty three oh two was was hitting on. And then kind of had a different issue with the finding in twenty twenty three oh three. There were two grants that, and they were federal expenditures. These grants were federal in nature. And these two grants simply weren't on the schedule that we got for audit. So that was just, these amounts were just excluded and they should have been included. So that was the issue with with this one. These, these grants were were not major programs for the single audit. So that's why they're just separated out, just for reporting to the Federal Audit Clearinghouse. Kind of want to separate activity relating to the major program that was audited versus non-major programs. So that pretty much summarizes the towns. Trying to think of anything else. I wanted to highlight, there were, when you're looking at the government-wide statements, there were two restatements, nothing major, related to accrued interest on the long-term debt. Last year's town report, for some reason, didn't have it in. So we proposed adjustment there to get that in for the report. So that's what that first, that first restatement amount was. And then there was another piece of the restatement with which related to an overstatement some accounts payable. So nothing, nothing crazy, but just worth worth a highlight. And there's a lot more I could talk about, but I think I'll open it up for questions. And if folks want me to go into more detail on anything, happy to do that.
You use the term single audit, and for those of us not in the accounting field, can you explain why that was required and what it entails? That's different from our normal audit?
Right, right. So so normally, you guys just have a, you know, kind of a standard, you know, audit, you know, prescribed by the Gatsby. So there, you know, there's, there's that audit. And then, you know, government auditing standards apply since the town is a government. So you have that. It's all like a yellow book report that we then issue relating to that. Now, since the town had federal expenditures that were in excess of $750,000, that triggers what they call a single audit for the year ended June thirty twenty twenty three. So now there's a whole nother audit that's required, and it's required by the uniform guidance. It's written into the code of federal regulations. So if you ever wanted to look at it, you can just, you know, actually really just Google it, just, you know, single audit as required by uniform guidance, and you'll get a hit. And it just kind of lays out all the requirements, you know, and it does apply if your expenditure, if your federal expenditures are in excess of $750,000. So what that meant is we had to get a schedule from Robert, you know, some somebody from the town, listing out those federal awards. And, you know, detailing them by, okay, what federal agency did they come to where they pass through the state or another agency or something like that. So that's the, that's the report you see on page. Let me just pull up so you can look at it. On page, on page seventy two, you'll see that report. So basically, we got this schedule and then we applied, you know, single audit procedures. And that basically involved looking at the different grants listed on it and then picking what they call a major program based off of significance, dollar amount normally. And then from there, once we pick this, the the major program, then we just applied, you know, additional audit procedures to that grant based off of guidance from the Office of Management and Budget and other other sources. In a nutshell, that's, that's what it, that's what it is. It's nothing, nothing, nothing bad or anything like that. It's just a requirement if the federal expenditures are over a certain amount.
So last year, our bill for the town was nine, a little over nineteen thousand, and this year it was thirty. Is that because of the single audit?
So the fee. Let me, let me just look up the historical on that. There, I mean, there's definitely going to be an additional charge for the single audit because it's a whole nother audit that we have to do. So the town. Yeah, it looks like in twenty twenty two, the fee charged was about twenty three, twenty three, twenty four, change. And then this year, it went up by maybe basically said the single audit, and and the single audit pricing kind of has a range. I mean, it's kind of based on complexity, too. And then obviously, if it's a first, what we would consider a first year, I, you know, the past two years weren't audited, or the past two years didn't have a single audit. You know, we factored that into the pricing as well. So the single audit added about $7,000 to that, that fee from last year, more or less.
And should we expect that next year? I mean, just because it came in quite a bit over what we budgeted, so it may, it made it
Yeah. I mean, definitely, you know, keep, keep tabs on the federal expenditures, because if they do fall below seven fifty, you know, you won't need a single audit. I've also heard some rumblings, I got to confirm it, that the threshold is going to be going up. So that could also positively impact you guys. So I think, yeah, just keep, just keep tabs on where you think your federal expenditures are going to be, because I'm just thinking historically, the town hasn't needed a single audit every year. It's kind of been sporadic. And then the last time the town needed it was for that Stafford or Stafford Commons housing project. So, you know, if if history, if history is any indication, the town will need it every single year. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, if if the expenditures are over, yeah, definitely anticipate, you know, that single audit fee having to, you know, get paid once that audit's done.
And one point of clarification, when Robert and Patricia looked into it, and we realized that no money had been allocated to the sewer for the audits. So they actually transferred $7,000 today from the town budget over to the sewer for the audit. So the town now is at twenty three thousand, not thirty thousand. Are there any questions from the select board or the trustees? That's, it's a let Tyler go.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Good rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Next, we're moving into an executive session. So I'll consider a motion to enter executive session under one BSA three thirteen A one A to discuss personnel matters. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Any days, sorry. Motion carries.
So put a motion to enter executive session to one BSA three-one-three to discuss personnel.
Second.
All in favor?
Nikki, do a break over for Frank, please. Well, maybe the background.
Leaving without.
Needles.
Needles.
I'm sorry.
They're on purpose.
Impales.
Only in grace, put on your dance.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be on the one.
Is she gonna carry during us?
I thought she was. I think she's in her car. Right.
First night.
I mean.
Hey, so we're out of the executive session. On to presentations. Our first one is the personnel policy. Presentation. There's a man at the podium.
Eric Dafy, Minnesota manager.
That guy.
So I'm here this evening to talk to the boards about updating the personnel policy. We'll get into kind of the ifs and buts in a second, but I do want to thank Nikki, who did a lot of the work on this. She spent a lot of time talking to VLCT, talking to other communities and trying to figure out what should be included in this policy and what cannot be included in this policy. Part of what some will say later on is this is not the policy I want. It's a policy I could put together this time. Similar to when I present the budget to you, there's obviously more I want in it if we had I had all the time in the world to sit down and do this for a month and a half. You know, I think we have a very different policy in front of you. But as we know, time is limited here. So this is what we could put together over the course of an entire year. So history of it, this policy was created in 2020. It has not been updated since. It has not been looked at. I'll be honest, when I came in in February, most of this was not even being followed. It kind of just existed as a personal policy, but besides some of the vacation sick time, it was mostly ignored or not even talked about. Since this policy was created, all the union contracts have been updated. So the first policy in union contracts do not mesh at all. Which creates confusion and lack of consistency. A great example of this is Martin Luther King Day. All the unions have it as a holiday. The present policy does not. So either the town, the municipal manager has to either close town hall, ask department heads to come in and work. Or only have department heads come in and work and take time off. Which seems kind of insane if you have the DPW director in by himself and only him as home on a holiday. So that's kind of the example of where things aren't, don't line up well. Again, this updated policy for your consideration is based on guidance in VLCT. They have kind of personal policy that you can go kind of steal. That's where we got a lot of the language from. So it has been reviewed a lot by attorneys. Talking to other municipalities around Vermont to see what they have and try to align our benefits close to theirs. And also with staff, trying to get input from the staff to see what they wanted in the personnel policy. Because again, part of this is to protect the town, but also part of it is to encourage our employees to stay with us for a long period of time. So our personal policy that kind of benefits them. So again, this happened about a year ago. As I said, when I came in, the policy was kind of a piece of paper and then everyone talked about. I opened it up prior to my first week or two, started laughing, put it away because it just didn't make a lot of sense. And didn't really do what it needed to do. So we spent months going over guidance in VLCT and talking to other municipalities. Once we had kind of a pretty good draft that we're happy with, we sent to every employee in Woodstock for them to look at, to review and offer suggestions. Some of those suggestions were included in the personnel policy you have now. Some were not. I want to stress, we'll go over some things that weren't included. There weren't, they weren't not included, if I can say that, because they were bad ideas. Some of them because we just didn't have the bandwidth. Some of them, we didn't want to create more confusion or things we weren't really prepared to put in place yet. So we kind of have those on the back burner for updates in the future. The hope of this policy is having it in place by July 1, 2024, which gives us only 20 days. I'm being optimistic. As we know, the original goal was to have this conversation in April, throughout all of April, but the short-term rental meetings kind of pushes back. And then I took a vacation, so now here we are. We'll talk later about kind of scheduling more meetings up until July 1. But if we can't make July 1 being as close as possible to July 1, I think we would be very beneficial as that's kind of the new fiscal year and having these things aligned at the same time will be very helpful. So the goal of this policy, we want to kind of send clear expectations for all employees. So they know what's expected of them. They know what they're getting. They know how to act, how to behave, what they can and can't do. For protecting municipality and the employees. So we have things in it that makes sure that we're protected. But also the employees are protected. So if there's an issue with the employee, they know what they can do to get rectified. But also we can protect ourselves in case we have to get rid of an employee or discipline them. To retain and recruit skilled employees. Happy and qualified staff, makes better workers, that provide better services to the community. And then the residents are happier if their tax dollars are going to good services. If they come in and people are happy, smiling, happy to be here, they're going to do better work and that works in a show. People are going to appreciate it. Similar to the budgets, a good personnel policy is going to create a blueprint for what we want Woodstock to be. What we want to be in the future. So what employees do we want to retain, recruit? How we want to treat them when they get in here. Similar to the budget set is another policy that really speaks to what we want Woodstock to be. So it's not only, you know, is it three personal days or two personal days? It's how we want Woodstock to look like to people who want to be here. We mentioned some of the work Nikki did. So she has sent us some HR conferences, parent certificates, help creates internal policies, review old policies. Help us streamline some of our processes, reviewed, updated, and sometimes created in police files that did not exist previous to her looking through some of them. So I do want to thank her for all the hard work on that. Okay, so here's the section that getting my staff mad at me. So here are things that we did not include in this current policy. I did skip this from before. The goal is, we have a policy now. The boards make updates to it now-ish, but then we review this each year to kind of make changes. I think we want to inhabit of all these documents, personnel policy, budgets, ordinances. They'll live in documents that we can come back to and look at anytime we want. They're not like Ten Commandments. We put them in stone, we hang them on the wall and we forget about them forever. We want these to kind of be constantly reviewed to make sure we're being up to date as possible. So one thing that we talked about was having town meeting day as a holiday. Some municipalities do have this. So on town meeting day, use that Tuesday. Town hall is closed, so employees can either participate in their town meeting that day or if they're one at home. For me, on town meeting day, I worked from home and our chairman Bethel, so I attend Bethel's town meeting, then I came to work. I had that benefit with some flex hours because I work all the time. Most employees don't have that ability. So this was discussed, decided not to include it in this year, but there it is. Another one's unlimited vacation time. So this is very popular and for the private sector. It works two ways. One, it's one very attractive to employee to think of unlimited vacation time, vacation whenever I want. The benefit to municipality is when they leave, there's no payouts, right? They have no accrued time. So we don't have to pay them for eight months of vacation time. They walk out the door with nothing. We do not do this. A, we have a lot of employees that have built up vacation time already. So how we transition them away from that would be very difficult. Second, you need very strong department heads that are willing to say no to vacation time. You need employees who are not going to take advantage of it. So an idea that got thrown out there, it's not included, but we talked about it. Comp time. So this would not be paid comp time. But what would be is if someone has a night meeting, like Robert's here tonight. He would gain two hours of comp time that he could use within a time, a time period, let's say a month or six months. To maybe leave early one day or come in late one day or take a longer lunch one day. Again, an idea that got talked about, it's a good way to kind of help ensure work-life balance. They'd say to someone, you're going to be here late tonight. Coming late tomorrow or leave early Friday so you can spend more time with your family. Again, not including this personal policy, but something to think about. Lump sum vacation. So again, the way we work is you get accrual each month on your vacation. A conversation we had was could you lump sum? So day one, you've got your three weeks vacation or your two weeks vacation. We weren't sure if we could even do that in our accounting system, so we did not look that far into it, but again, another idea. This is another one. Different accrual timeline, so vacation sick bonus. So one idea that got brought up is if you see the personnel policy now, we kind of split between one and five years, five and 10, 10 and 15, 15 and 20, 20 and 25. Which is the standard way you do these things in most municipalities and a lot of businesses. This idea got brought up was could we spend time and figure out what's kind of the time when most people leave their job? Is it two years? Is it three years? Is it a year and a half? Is it four years? If you find that kind of that, that time, is that when you change the benefits? So instead of weighing the five years, you said, okay, people leave the job normally two and a half years into it. So at two years, we're going to give you more vacation, more sick time. Again, some of it, we didn't have the time to look into, but again, an idea that we should consider going forward. Paid parental leave, dependent care reimbursement, two more ideas got brought up. And these are two things that we just didn't have the bandwidth really to kind of dig into and see the cost benefit of it. Whether it be useful, get all, get all the information. So I didn't want to present something to you that I could not fully explain and tell you what that would mean for us. So again, that's why it's not included, but again, things that could be very beneficial to our employees. So before I move on, I just want to make clear that I have suggested a personnel policy for the boards. You are of free will over that personnel policy. So any of these areas you think are a good idea and you want them included, you have that power as a board to include them. We can get more information for you on any of them, but you have free will when it comes to personnel policy. I may regret saying that, but possible. So some additions to the policy. We include definitions to kind of just let people know what we're talking about. A review with me and the boards on this policy yearly. Kind of employment practices. So when there's open position, internal transfers and promotions, hiring, personnel records, exit interview process. We've started doing exit interviews. They've been very valuable to get people's insights into working with stock because as they're leaving, they're a little more willing to speak freely. It's a great way to kind of get what they think about working for Woodstock is like. I'm not going through all of them, but you can see kind of all the stuff you have in front of you, conflict of interest, fraud, reasonable accommodations for nurses and mothers, telecommuting, outside employment, productivity, update computer system policies. So really trying to fatten up this policy and kind of cover as much ground as possible. So now we get to the good parts. Increased benefits. So these are the kind of major changes you'll see in a personnel policy. So you sit down with the one you have in front of you and the old one, these are things we want you to focus on. Going from one personal day to three personal days. Currently, every union except for the fired union has two personal days. Our personal policy still has one. The fire is going to be renegotiating their contract this year. My assumption is they'll ask for at least two personal days. The third personal day is a very, very small way to help combat burnouts in town hall and throughout the municipality. Personnel days do not roll over. So you, if you don't use them, you lose them. The people will use them. We're vacation time. You get paid out when you go, so people may not be as willing to use them. So giving someone three personal days is our way of saying, we want to make sure you take some time off for yourselves. So it's a good kind of way to kind of encourage people to take care of themselves a little bit more. Moving holidays, so increasing three paid holidays from what we currently have. So one we talked about is MLK Day. That will put us all in line with all the unions. So now the department heads would fall under the same policy as the union when it comes to that holiday. Next is Juneteenth, which is now a state holiday. The governor signed it, I think, two weeks ago. So this is kind of put us in line with state holidays, make sure we kind of mirror the state on that. The third is Indigenous Peoples' Day. To kind of show that as I talked about, what do we want Woodstock to be, what do we want Woodstock to look like, to tell us how people by having this holiday, it's a way to show that we are an inclusive community that cares about other people. Not only for our employees, but also for other communities as well. Some changes on vacation accrued leave time. So right now, when you're hired for six months, you have no vacation time. I think that that was done kind of at your probational, probationary period. But when people see that, it kind of really freaks them out. And then five days for the first year, then 10 days going on that. So And then five days for the first year, then ten days going on that. So the new one. Kind of throws in an extra day, extra week a little bit earlier. And full transparency, Nikki did this, but this would benefit me. So I'm gonna say that aloud. That I'm not trying to hide anything. This, I would have an extra week of vacation on this, so just everyone's clear on that. Blame Nikki, not me. But again, it's another way to show employees who stay here longer, that they have more time off to kind of really encourage them to stay. And one thing I should say with all this too. As I said earlier. When I'm talking about all these hours, it's based on forty hours. When we start talking about fire, the fire department EMS. We gotta make some changes because they don't work a forty-hour work. They work sometimes twenty-four hours a week or forty-eight hours a week. So there will be some adjustments for them. They're aware of it and will hash that out when the personnel policy is all set. Sick leave, same twelve days. After five years, you go to eighteen sick days. Again, that's hopefully encourage young people to get here. So when they start families, they have kids, they need more sick time. Another benefit for to keep them around for a little bit longer. Breathe it right now is three days. If you've lost anyone, three days is not enough time to to go home, come back, and be ready for work. I lost someone. I was back in the office in three days. And let me tell you, that month of work was not my best work. Right? Because you're already thinking positively, you're just going through the motions. So this kind of allows us to have, something horrible happen to you, take the time you need. We'll make it where you come back, we'll be here for you. So again, just showing employees we care about them and care with the situation. And they're not just robots that do a work. They're living, breathing people who have feelings and emotions. So in conclusion to the presentation, as I said, well, this is no by no means a perfect policy. Just like the budget was not a perfect budget, but we want to happen. Is that this is the first step and the boards look in this person policy, making changes. But also feeling comfortable that you can go back and make changes. Next year and the year after that, and the year after that. So this is also kind of not just updating this policy, but training us to think that way. That once the decision is made, we can't alter it after the fact. And the goal is to make reasonable changes now to improve this policy, take it from something that. Is not employee friendly at all, make it more employee friendly. And make this an attractive place to work with the goal that we can update this as we see fit. So what what's next? We need to schedule some more joint meetings. Who doesn't love being here at night, every single night? Where we talk more about questions the board has, concerns, changes you wanna make. We also need to schedule department head presentations and also meetings with committees and commissions to give them direction. So those things I think we can kind of do hand in hand. We're gonna department heads come and speak to the boards. Then after they leave, talk more about personnel policy, then have the committee's commission come, talk more about personnel policy, and hopefully have a vote after that. We'll agree on a final draft. Once there's agreement on the draft, we'll send it to our attorney to review to make sure everything's okay. Once it's then voted by the boards, it will then be voted by the unions to be attached to their contract. So we'll all have the same benefits. We'll not be reopening any of the contracts, so just gonna attach someone. We're not gonna do any more negotiations. And to the question I know will come up. Will this hurt a negotiation stance in those meetings? My argument is no, because it's gonna be in the personnel policy. It's not gonna be in the union contract. But they wanna codify it in the union contract, that something negotiates for that. Because the personal policy can change anytime. So if they don't negotiate to move it into the contract. We can come back next year and say, you know what? No personal days. Let's get rid of all of them. Like, hopefully we won't do that. But it's gonna force them to still negotiate on that, because if not, it won't be codified in their contract, and they're gonna want it codified in their contracts. Because their contracts never get worse. And it's much more difficult to change them. So I don't believe we'll lose the negotiation power on that. And that's all I have. I guess I said before, I'm happy to kind of take. Large overall questions. I think the board probably need more time to read through the eighty pages of what are the personnel policy. So if there are any kind of overarching questions or comments or anything, happy to take them now.
All the contracts up, the union contracts? I'm just trying to remember.
So fire and dispatch are up June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Police will be up, I believe, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven or six. I believe the DPW and Town, it's twenty twenty-seven as well, or twenty twenty-six, yeah.
Just do you have any questions or? Frank, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
A lot to digest.
Narrow it down and give you time, not ask you for anything big today. But I know like Susan and I looked through it and offered some feedback on the definitions. So if you have small edits that you see, go over there, let me know. If you wanna have conversations with me alone about this, just let me know, happy to. Or if you have any other concerns with it, let me know. And before we go tonight, we should kind of organize more meetings going forward.
Next item on our agenda is the same guy with appreciation.
Our deputy municipal manager. And I'll just update my resume before I get into this, just to be safe. Part two. So I think personnel policy is something that I think should be looked at and changed. What I also wanted to do was take some time and kind of give. An overview of what I've seen since I've been here, my experience here to some degree. Some changes that we have done already internally, some changes I think we make very quickly. Then also some large conversations, issues we should discuss openly. Soon, to make sure that we're all on the same page with what the future Woodstock to be. So, an agenda, go kind of purpose of this conversation, an introduction. My experience here, some observations, issues, solutions, policy, staff and finances. And then long-term issues and ask considerations. So this is my disclaimer. I'm not here to blame anyone. I'm not here to criticize any decision that got happened before me. Nor am I here saying things need to change immediately. What I wanna do is kind of give an overview of what I've seen since I've been here. Again, what's changes we've made. Challenges we still see coming down the road and offer suggestions for the future. I'm a firm believer that nothing can change unless we talk about it. So by having this conversation. Hopefully it motivates us to keep having these conversations. And then again, this is another step to for us to understand where we want Woodstock to be. And how can we assure that we have a positive and successful future for Woodstock? So I'm gonna start with a quote I saw from a book. This is a book called Unreasonable Hospitality. I found out about it by watching The Bear, which is my favorite TV show. And what it is, is a guy who ran a restaurant. He went, he came in, and he made it the most, the number one restaurant in the world. And we did by being unreasonable hospitality, which means you go out of your way to make everyone happy. But a quote he has in it, I thought was very interesting. And what is, I paraphrase it for myself. But I'm always gonna do what I think is best for Woodstock. It may not be what's best for any individual person at any time. If I do my job rights, what I, something I do, it's gonna be the best for Woodstock, but also for that person as a whole. Whether they know or not at the time. If I don't do something and decide to do something else, it's not personal. It's not because I don't like you. It's not because I don't feel like the relationship. It's just that I'm balancing your ass, your requests with everything I know, everything I have to decide, and then what I think is best for Woodstock. That could be saying, we'll get to that dirty trash barrel tomorrow. Because my guys need to sleep because they were out plowing for twenty-four hours. It's saying, I'll respond to that email about abortion in front of a stop sign because I'm in negotiations for a water company. Right? Or saying, that's not a good request. We're not gonna do that because that's gonna hurt us. My goal is when I leave, first, not to cry, which is sometimes difficult. But to know when I get home that I did the best I could for Woodstock that day. So sometimes I have to make people upset, including board members. And my goal of trying to do what's best for Woodstock, you know, e- each and every day. So let's play. A little bit of a game. So when we think of Woodstock from on, what do we think of? Magical, like a Hallmark movie. It's cute. It's for the gram. It's a great place to retire to. The way life should be, right? We've all heard these a thousand times from us, from residents, from tourists and everything. But when it's time to describe the actual inner workings of Woodstock. I feel very often we like to be Homer and kind of slowly fade away and not really discuss it. And I'm here to tell you that it's not great internally. And we can get into that, but the internal mechanism of a municipality Woodstock. Does not compare to the image of what Woodstock is to the people. There's almost two different worlds of being out there on the green. Hanging out, going to the stores, spending a night at one of the nice hotels, and then being here and looking through the financials. Using our software, dealing with residents. So it's kind of two different worlds. And I think we have to try to make those, blend those things and make it a better place. So with that said, let's play another game. Does this sound familiar? There's rising costs for government services and education. I think we all agree that's true. Stable population. We're now increasing the population, which increases the tax for households. The narrow real capital improvements have been done or really budgeted for. We really need to broaden the tax base, grow the grain list to get more money in and keep taxes down for people. People from New York and even my god, Massachusetts will find out about Woodstock. Then they'll either move here or visit here, and when they come, they'll either ruin Woodstock or enrich it. Some town plan is. Which will help take the direction of the town in whatever way we want it to go and help also reduce the tax burden residence. That all sound very familiar to Woodstock today. See gnawing heads, yes. I pulled that from a nineteen fifty-eight study. So nineteen fifty-eights, a planning and budget committee got together and created a plan for Woodstock. And those are the things they said in nineteen fifty-eight that Woodstock had to look into. I'd say we're still kind of in the same bones on these things. So not much has changed. In that time frame. Things have changed obviously, but the underlying issues that we need to face are still kind of the same. So, let's get into it. I've been here for sixteen months. I feel like in those sixteen months, we've accomplished five percent. Other things we need to do, the changes we need to make, to really get Woodstock to where I think it should be. We'll go through some of the things we've done so far, but it is a long road from here to where I think Woodstock needs to be, to be what it should be. Just said that. Some, this is my own fault. I'm not perfect. I had some successes, but I've also had some failures. And it has been a steep learning curve for me. Coming into Vermont was. Much different than I thought it was gonna be. What I encountered was much different than I thought it was gonna be. So it took me a long time to kind of get my feet wet. And I wish this was a joke, but a week before the flood in July. I told my wife, I was like, you know what? I think I'm kind of getting it. It's like, this is, this is gonna be okay. And then the flood happened and, you know. I met with FEMA yesterday, so things are still going along there. And I, I still get to the place where I'm actually managing, not doing. I, I, I do think I work. I have projects. I have deadlines each day. And when I'm doing that, I'm in the weed each day. I can't spend time on grants. I can't spend time managing staff, helping them get better. I can't sit down and do a long-term planning because I have deadlines, I have commitments, I have fires to get out of there every single day. So that also has been a hindrance to me as well. Coming to Woodstock, as you all know, Woodstock had a single municipal manager for over thirty years. And then till nineteen, there's an internal interim manager, then external interim manager, then a full-time manager. Then two years later, internal. Interim manager again, then another external interim manager, and then I was hired. So in five years, there were seven people that were municipal manager in that timeframe. Brandon Chief Green was there twice, but it's still seven different people sat in that chair. In a span of five years, trying to manage a town. So what does that mean? Why is that a big deal? Has led to numerous issues. One, board members have felt the need. Or saw a need to be more involved in the daily operations of the municipality because there's no real leadership. Board members tell, okay, well, I have to step up because there's no one here to help. Although that's great, it also creates confusion with staff members about power responsibilities and priorities. If I'm asking an employee to do something, a board member's asking them to do something, and the department head is asking them to do something. What are they gonna do? Who are they gonna listen to? Where, how their priority is gonna shift? How, how are they gonna make Susan happy, but also me happy, but also Stephen happy at the same time? Right? So it kind of creates this narrative where they're in a situation where they don't know what to do, they feel powerless, and they feel no matter what they do, they're gonna let someone down. No real policies or procedures in place. We talked about this kind of in the personnel policy as well. We have the personnel policy, we have union contracts. That's it. There's no other policies we follow. There is no institutional knowledge. So by having that gap of seven people in five years, you don't have someone you can go to and say, hey. What was that thing five years that happened? What was that thing three years that happened? Or why did this happen? There's just a gap of knowledge at the, at the top level. That also created no oversight or in-depth knowledge of our finances. Robert's here. Probably once a day, Robert comes in and says, what's this? I say, I don't know. And then we have to spend half an hour trying to find out what it is. There's no one we can go to to say, hey, can you talk to me about this? So that kind of creates a real gap of knowledge there. Another thing is departments having to operate on their own, not communicating with other departments and pushing back against the management office. In other words, when there's no leadership there, departments learned or thought they had to defend themselves and fight for themselves. It also creates a mistrust of chain of command. If they feel like they have to do things themselves, they're not gonna listen to me and talk to me or person in my position because. They think, well, the last person that helped me, they were here for six months, they were gone. I'm still here. I know what's right. I didn't do these things. They operate in silos. They say again, you know, if they can't trust that someone's gonna be in this job for a long term. They're gonna say, okay, I have to do what I have to do for my department, and that's all I care about, because I'm not gonna have the support of someone three years from now. You know, if I go to the department and say, hey, listen, I know you're asking for a new employee. I can give you this year, you know, we're really need someone else to plan in zone, and so they're gonna employ you this year. If they know I'm here for five years and next year I'll come back and say, yep, it's your turn for a new employee. They don't do that. If they think Eric's gonna be gone in six months, they're not gonna wanna listen to me on that. Again, if no one is in charge, then everyone is in charge. If there's no leadership, then everyone thinks. They're in charge and their opinions are what matter, and their view of things is what matters. Then also the famous thing, things are always done this way, and they're gonna last you. So if they, again, see seven people in a chair in five years. They're gonna say, we're not gonna listen to him because he'll be here for a year and all the changes he wants to make don't matter. So it's pushing back, and that's daily of people saying, hey, we're gonna do this way, and in their head they're like, yeah, but is Eric gonna be here in a year? And if he's sorry, not gonna be, but I'm gonna be here, so I'm not gonna really buy into what he wants to do. So that creates lack of efficiencies, we're not talking to each other, lack of trust that we're all doing the same thing, working on the same team. And really not collaborating in the environment, because again, we're, everyone's focused on what's best for themselves instead of what's best for the municipality. So what have we done to kind of fix that? So we're taking small changes so far to kind of help fix that. One thing with the boards, I wanna thank all of you for it, is we have kind of agreed to our roles. It's your board, your job to legislate, it's my job to manage. So you create the laws, the ordinance, you create the personnel policy, you vote on it. I make sure it's followed after the fact. And we're doing a very good job of kind of having that chain of command so employees know, I know, you know, how things flow. Goes from. Goes from board member to the chair to me, down, down to, down to employee. So all kind of all on the same page. So then I get information and say, um, so let's say Laura wants plans on do something. She comes to me and says, okay, can plans on do X? I say, yes, but I know they're doing short-term rentals. So I say, okay, it's gonna take a week and a half. So I know Stephen's definitely working on this, so you're gonna have to wait. And then Stephen doesn't feel bogged down by too many requests and we can kind of make things be as efficient as possible. We've created organizational charts, um, to kind of show where everyone sits and where it was located. That's quite small. Uh, but you'll see, to make you guys happy, you're up top above everyone else. It goes down to me, then the apartment heads, and then to the employees below there. So kind of very crystallized view of how things should be. Policies. Do we need policies, right? We haven't had any. So there's no policies for hiring, for onboarding, for checking to the staff, for annual reviews, exit interviews, expectations, promotions. Uh, no financial policies for accounts payable, for receivables, for payable, for reimbursements, for procurement. One of the things I saw in my first months was a reimbursement from employee. They were at a conference, um, they had a forty-five dollar meal and two beers and they filed reimbursements. Now, never through any place ever reimbursed alcohol, but we didn't have a policy. I had no way to stand on to, to deny that because we had nothing to go back to. So not ideal. Um, the internal joke we have is if you ask them about a policy, we don't have one. Right? Because we just didn't have anything in place. So anytime someone says a policy for that, there's no policy. So what does that mean? We can't enforce the right thing to do, uh, provide any oversight if no one knows what's expected of them, right? If we don't have a policy in place, how can you say to someone, you're doing the wrong thing when there's, we never told them what they should be doing? Uh, so it puts us at risk by allowing people to spend money the way they want to do, act the way they want to do. And also, uh, Patrick's idea that we've always done this way is correct because there's no other way we've told them to do it. Also bad financial decisions. So think of no procurement rules, right? So we're not telling people to get three quotes. We're not telling them to go to bed. We're not telling them to, um, not call their friend and say, hey, John, can you come over and do this for us? We'll pay you. Right? Because not having those things in place opens us up to very bad financial decisions. Um, bad personal decisions, right? If we don't have a way to hire people, talk to employees, manage them, we're gonna make bad decisions and then not be able to manage them correctly in the moment. With all some of these policies, we don't have employees that feel it. We hire them, put them in the job and then we don't check in with them. And until they come to us and say, hey, I'm leaving, they're like, oh my god, what's wrong? Why are you leaving? Like, there's nothing in place to kind of talk to employees, figure out what they're doing, um, figure out what they're feeling and then make changes and better the situation while they're still here, while it's still salable. Now when they're handing the two-week notice and going to end of the job. Also with policies not being in place, um, it's hard to know what we're doing well or what we're not doing well. So I've talked constantly about needing more staffing and needing more technology. I can't sit here and say, we need five more employees and these three technologies. Because we don't know how that's all gonna uh, work together. So get one new employee, two more technologies, that might be enough for a few years. But not having that information of how things should go, um, really puts a disadvantage of knowing what exactly we need. In shorts, without policies or change that, it's like we're trying to escape a cave with a lighter, right? We're not, we're not gonna do it. We have this little thing, it's all dark. Um, and that's kind of how we've been operating, just kind of going through the motions, not really knowing what's going on or why it's going on. And not putting anything in place to really change things, uh, for the better. So here's what we've done so far. So here's a list of things we put in place over the last sixteen months. Hiring procedure, uh, vehicle policy, sick policy, uh, drug and alcohol policy, remote work from home policy. So this is, uh, bad weather, childcare issues. Uh, we have policies people can work from home one day if they need to kind of alleviate that, that pain. Uh, with the policy, what happens with town hall closing? Believe it or not, vacation leave requests. We did not have a system in place if someone wanted vacation time to approve it and then put on a calendar so we know they're actually gone that day. So we have that. Uh, a policy for communication to residents. So we now have a policy in place that dictates how quickly you have to respond to an email, how quickly you respond to a phone call, how you have to interact with residents on a day-to-day basis. So employees have an expectation of what they need to do anytime they're communicating with anyone from outside. Exit interview process, um, a new annual and probation review process. So every year we're sitting down, talking to people, uh, before the six months is up, we're talking to them again to say, hey, it's not working out, here's why you need to go. We're saying, great, you survived, but you can still need to work on these things. So really try and touch them as much as possible and talk to them. Uh, we put a reimbursement policy in place. I put a credit card policy in place. Um, we're still working kind of an overarching financial policy, which will be similar to the personnel policy. Um, but we're still on the bandwidth to kind of put that all together right now, but we will be working on it. Um, a payroll process. So when time sheets seem to be, need to be in, in the office. Uh, we put together our agenda policy for the boards. We did an employee survey. So in March, we sent out a sheet to every single employee, asked them to fill it out. Uh, and they gave us feedback on what they liked about working for Woodstock, uh, changes they need, the frustrations they, they, they felt there. Uh, it was anonymous. So people felt the need that it could be, you know, truthful as much as possible. And then an expectations memo. So we put, I put together whole memo, what's expected to every single employee and how they should act. So that is expectation memo and that came from the employee survey. So we asked employees how they think they should have to act in Woodstock. We got their feedback. That's what we have. So every employee has that. That's what they can be judged against on a day-to-day basis. How they follow these expectations. Uh, if they're not, then there's roads to that. Uh, but really sitting down and saying, hey, this is what we expect of you day in, day out, and this is what you're agreeing to doing by working here. So trying to get the staff more involved. We have bi-weekly meetings. So everyone sits around a table and we talk about what's going on. Every department talks about what they're going through, what they see coming up, challenges they have. So DPW can talk about roadwork they're doing. The fire chief can say, okay, can I make sure I have room to get through with my trucks? That communication. Uh, we can tell them what's happening in agenda meetings for the board so they can be prepared for that. So really just having the time to sit down and talk to everyone and understand what's going on. The yearly survey we were talking about is kind of get feedback from employees and the hope, one of the questions was, at this time next year, what do you hope has changed or improved upon? So we actually hope to see some improvements. So expectations, we talked about that, uh, monthly department head meetings. So again, just the department heads together and kind of have a more in-depth conversation about their departments, what's going on with them, um, and really try and get people to work together as much as possible. Uh, we move offices to staff, um, to kind of help increase efficiency. So a great example of this is putting the finance team together. Uh, we realized that for accounts receivable, it was set up so our clerk was getting things in. She put it all in one account and never touched it again. And then when we went to reconcile that month, Robert would go in and have to try, try, try to find each deposit and then move it to the right accounts, which caused a lot of time, effort, made recycling very difficult. So Robert gave them the access to deposit the money in the right accounts immediately. So we've saved a bunch of time and effort on that. Um, and just having them in the same office together, having that conversation led to that. We started using new software called Monday, uh, for project management and collaboration. So what you're able to do is I can go in, throw Stephen a task, give him a deadline, tell him how important I think it is. Um, and then add notes and, and files onto it. So then he can work off that. Instead of me having to check in with him and say, hey, how's that coming along? We can interact without having to interact face to face. So something like me who goes in meetings, it gives Stephen the ability to kind of keep me informed what's going on without having to sit down day to day and talk about it. Collaboration. So this is still a work in progress. You know, I think having a small staff is sometimes good, but also sometimes also bad because we're so busy working and just trying to get through the job. We're not sitting there talking, talking about our job and having people give us feedback on it. So that's a challenge we have of trying to get people to take it slow and say, it's okay, you'll finish it. But if you talk about it to someone else, maybe we kind of get going and add more ideas. If we can do that, uh, we can increase the efficiency, um, because people can see how the jobs relate. I think it's that communicate better, uh, and then also can share the work. So if someone's, if people are doing twice the work, then it may not know that they don't talk to each other, but they start talking to each other, then we can kind of make changes that way. Ask the question, is there a better way to do this? Again, if someone's doing the job, they've always done the job, they're always gonna do it the same way. If you start talking to someone else about it and they say, hey, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? Suddenly, new ideas come, we become, we become more efficient. So on this, I cannot take credit for any of this, but the listeners and, um, planning zoning got together one day, started talking about, you know, how things flow when it comes to permits and occupancy. And they realized that in a gap of transition, um, there was no communication. And so they decided pulling reports and looking to see what permits were filed, uh, and if they were on the grand list or not. Through that process, they found almost six point five million dollars that they added to the grand list, uh, in just the last year. By just having those conversations, coming in and saying, hey, I thought of this idea and working together, they found six point five million dollars that we were not taxing previously. So that's just a one example of people working together. When you give them the space and time, they actually do some of these things that are net benefits to the town. Um, so now we put a place of policies that won't happen in the future. So one, we got the money, but two, we'll ensure it never happens again. Uh, financials and finance. Let's play another game. Uh, Fourth of July is coming up on July fifth. Does anyone in here know how much we spent on fireworks? How much? Anyone else? So what, twenty minutes? Right? Anyone take another guess? Robert knows. Eleven thousand dollars. So we spent eleven thousand dollars for the contract for the fireworks. Uh, that's not include anyone's time, effort, uh, or anything else that goes into it. Does anyone want to guess how much money we spent on a financial software? That does our accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll, a grand list, a benefits and our employee maintenance and a budgeting.
We'll go with ten thousand.
Anyone else?
Not only because you had eleven.
I'm gonna say thirty.
This is Denver?
It is Denver.
Oh.
Sixty thousand dollars.
What? How much? Hey, I want.
We spent five thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars on our financial software. We spent eleven thousand dollars on a twenty-minute fireworks show once a year. I'm just gonna pause for a second.
I'll do it for three.
Fireworks or the?
Yeah, which one? Yeah.
The fireworks. I'm out of my boundary on that.
Um, so I just want that to, to sink in for a second. So the thing, the program we use the most that gives us the money, tracks the money, pays our employees, um, does the grand list that we added six point five million dollars to, we pay half of what we pay for fireworks.
What's the point? I don't know. Wait, does that program work?
I will get into it, but it works, but not well.
Works, but not well. Does the fireworks work?
Yes.
Big bang.
So we're getting ourselves out of a, a hole of unknown financials. Part of this is the, the software. The software can only do so much. So we can't, to investigate one deposit takes two or three reports. It takes probably thirty minutes to just pull up one deposit from two years ago. So we're wasting thirty minutes on a solution that could very well be found in two minutes on, on other software. Uh, not having that financial information from before. We don't know how bad things, how good things are. We have the audits, we base that things off that. But just not knowing where money is or where money is allocated. Another great example of this is the last two or three years, the town has allocated money in the operating budgets for the Southwood Stock wastewater plants. It was on the capital reserves, it was in the operating line. We haven't been paying the bond yet because it hasn't come due. So each year on June thirtieth, that money went away into our undesignated fund balance. The money is still there, but it was never allocated to the Southwood Stock plant. So we found that out. There's gonna be a front of the select board next week to do a transfer to fix that. Um, but that's just an example of three or four years of money not being allocated to the correct place. And luckily we found that, so we're gonna make that change. But these are things we're finding out almost daily on how things are or, or, or not. To fix that, um, Robert's here. Uh, so a new finance director. Uh, we're finally putting financial policies into place so we can track things, hold people accountable, make sure things go well. Um, we're gonna take a new approach to the budget for FY twenty-six. Uh, we're gonna try zero budgeting, uh, which is kind of a different approach. So typically we say, planning zoning, last year you spent a thousand dollars on office supplies, here's another thousand dollars for office supplies. What we're gonna say is, here's a budget, create a budget and then justify every single expense to us. So then give them the chance to say, okay, here are things I need and here's why I need them. And then we can decide how best that will work. Uh, but really trying to make it so we prove every dollar is being spent in the correct way. Software, the price of all the steps to do, to do work. So, um, I had software in Massachusetts, which I absolutely hated, uh, until I moved here and used Denver. And I dream of that software every single day. What the software, software we currently have is, um, eight or nine steps to get one thing done. That's including eight and nine clicks, that, that's including going through the system and trying to find things. Trying to figure out why something happened or tracking expense. Uh, if you ever want to have fun, go watch Roberts with eight different pieces of paper in his hand, trying to track how this transfer came in here and how it ended up over here. Because it's not as simple as clicking on it and seeing the history. You have to pull things all over the place. So it just, it's not a good way to track money, it's not a good way to use it. It also takes up a lot of our time internally, trying to work through it to get simple answers that take way too long. So we're gonna try to do some things to fix that. Uh, we're gonna start using a, a payroll software uh, that's gonna streamline our payroll. It's gonna take it from taking a day to probably about two hours. Uh, it's gonna be all automated. It's gonna give, um, employees the ability to see all their information online. So they don't have to ask us for their pool time. We'll just see it right there. If there are mistakes, they'll just see them in live time. So we can fix them immediately. Uh, so when we use that, um, I will come back at some point and ask for new software, uh, whether it's AP software to attach to network or something else. That's gonna be a future ask of mine. So from that, so what do we need in the short term, um, from the boards in the community? One, go slow and get it right. That's internally and externally. So taking the time to do things the correct way and going slow with them and making sure they're right rather than kind of pushing things through just because we want to get something done. Good example of this, despite what's happening tomorrow, is the Gore Green Ordinance on the trustees. They spent about six months talking about it from about September to when they voted on it. Multiple meetings, all the conversations, bringing people in, getting feedback. So when it came time for a votes, it was unanimous five-nothing because they had done it slowly and rightly the whole way. So kind of follow that pulse, step, step, um, that way. Make more policies and fix the policies. It's gonna be hard for us. We've already had these conversations of like, oh, he adds to the agenda or, or we can do this. And it's hard at first. The more we stick to these policies, the more people are gonna understand that the policies aren't gonna change and they're gonna start following it. It's gonna be easier for everyone. Uh, next thing is what the board's gonna do, goal setting, uh, and then follow through on those goals. So these goals should be specific, actionable and achievable, meaning we're not gonna say, yes, we're gonna do more planning. Right? It's like, no, we're going to, um, actively try to add three new houses in two years. And we're gonna do that by doing these things. We're gonna say, we're gonna, we're not gonna say we're gonna fix the finances. We're gonna say, no, we're going to, um, increase funding so we buy more software. So make the goals actionable. So we actually do them, follow them. And then where the goals are, um, provide the necessary information or funding to make those goals happen. We can't say we want to do something and then not allocate any time and money to that. So kind of really sticking to what we want to do. Having an overarching plan for each year, but also for a long-term, five-year plan. And that should fit into our budgets, but also our agendas, our votes, um, and then non-meeting activity. Um, should kind of reflect that. So we're saying, um, we wanna acquire the, the aqueduct. Right? So what we're doing in meetings, outside of meetings, should be everything stepping towards that goal. Um, not getting distracted by shiny keys or something else. Try to make our meetings more effective and more efficient. Um, so we read the booklet ahead of time, so we have a knowledge what's happening. Uh, we ask questions ahead of time if possible, to kind of avoid some of the logistic questions that happen in the meetings, to speed things along. Um, if there's an ordinance involved, everyone, myself included, should be reading the ordinance ahead of time, have the ordinance present with us in the meeting. So we revert back to it. Um, and then using agendas to actually help run the meetings. So have time limits on it, um, have directions, say, this vote, um. Will impact ordinance five, 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 two, five, five, two can be found here, it's, it's back here. So the boards. Have all the information you need ahead of time and prepared. I have all the information, I'm prepared. Um, and then we can kind of go through the agenda to kind of make sure we hit all the marks and spend our time where it should be. Um, I've gotten a lot of complaints from people who have attended meetings and had to wait two, three hours to speak. And they get frustrated, they're not coming back. Like, why am I doing this? Uh, I just wanna, you know, ride my bike through the green or something. I had to spend three hours sitting through a meeting about whatever. So trying to make sure the meetings. Are effective, but also show the residents that we're doing the work. Right? That we, we value their time and their effort, and we're taking what we can do to do a good job for them. Um. Ways to keep current employees and attract new ones. So the person policy is one of these things, showing. Our employees that we want them to stay, we want to give them benefits to keep them, um, but also recruit new ones. It is very, very, very challenging to get employees here these days. Um, in my sixteen months, I probably hired for somewhere between five and eight positions. Um, you're lucky if you get five applicants, uh, for a department head job. Um, you're lucky if two of them show up to meet with you, uh, and you're lucky if one of them's qualified. Um, and that is across the board. Um, not just here, but other meetings I talked about, it's very, very difficult to get employees. The one benefit we've had since I've been here is our, um, health insurance. We've had three employees join us. Solely based on the health insurance, knowing that either had a family and they needed it, or because the health insurance is so good, it offsets. The, uh, decrease in salary they were taking. Um, but for someone who moved here in the last two years, um, it's challenging to move here. The cost of living is higher than. It is in Boston. I go to Boston, I feel like I'm at the dollar store, you know, like, because things are cheaper than they are in Woodstock sometimes. Um, buying a house here is difficult, but getting an apartment here is difficult. So you're telling someone, hey, come work for sixty thousand dollars, but we can't guarantee you a house, can't guarantee your apartment, uh, nothing's open till Wednesday nights. Um, you know, you may have to drive forty-five minutes to this job. That's not a very attractive way to recruit people. So the people we have, we have to find ways to keep them, and then find creative ways to get new people in here. Um. More staff, have with us all the time. Um, we have a new staff member that's out since July one, so thank. Thank you to the board for approving that, and the residents for approving that, I'm, I'm very thankful. Um, but every situation is a zero-sum game, which means every decision we have with staff. Means if they're doing one thing, they're not doing something else. So it's not a matter of. Most people having the free time to do it, it's here are three things, you have an hour, which one are you gonna do, and which two can we kick to tomorrow or the next day? Uh, and by, when you get to that thing, five more things will fall on your table. So it's really a situation where we're constantly up against it, trying to figure out what to do. Uh, we just don't have the staffing to really do the things we need to do internally. Uh, more technology investments. Um, by having technology that can do some of the work for us, we may not need as much staff. Right? But regardless, we can be more effective and more efficient if we have things online. We have permanent software. People can do their permits online, it'll flow through us online, so you can cut down on people coming in, which gives us more time. It's gonna put checks and balances through the permanent process. Um, we found out recently that. Um, I think on sewer permits, um, we were not checking if they actually paid. They were coming to give them the permit because they paid someone else. So there was no conversation, because we weren't talking to each other. Um, so finding ways to kind of invest in technology is another way to cut down on expenses. Maybe not have as much more staffing, but also make people's jobs a little bit easier, so they can focus on other things. Um, and then community-wide, um, there is. A exhortation by a lot of people in the community for a level of service that is not equivalent to the staffing that we currently have. Um, I talked to the DPW guys the other day, to, for them to do their plow routes. Um, so we have about six people plowing, they're all in their route, and then go back and sand on a stone for one pass, takes five to seven hours. That's one pass, and we know when we get snow, it doesn't come once and falls. Um, so expecting them to be on someone's street immediately is not always feasible. Um, someone having a small pothole in the dirt road and not being fixed within an hour. Is, we get phone calls on that, with people coming in, you know, uh, more than once I've gotten. A missed phone call, then an email, and the person's in my office within an hour of the first missed call, asking why I haven't got back to them yet. Um, so this kind of expectation versus what we can actually provide, uh, is something that we really need for people to understand that we can't. Be at the beck and call every two seconds. We're gonna get to your issue, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna solve it, but it may take more time than you think it, uh, should be. Um, and then again, that these extra requests or anything coming to us. Stops us from doing something else we're doing. So the more things that fall on a plate, the less time we're focused on those things and other things. Um, so I'll pause here for a second. So those are the things I think in the short term. We can kind of fix, we fix some of them, as we talked about, we're making progress on, on, on a lot of them. Um, but there's still, I think, work we can do together in the community to kind of help, uh, bridge that gap. And this is where you get in trouble. So, some long-term issues and, and challenge I, I, I see for Woodstock. Um, one, um, is I think there's a tendency, um, to focus on small concerns. Rather than the larger, harder, harder topics. Um, being passive about big issues, but being active about smaller issues. You know, I get people more excited about overflowing trash cans than I do about wastewater plants. Uh, more people excited about, um. Some dirt on the road than they are about, uh, potentially buying a water company, or their energy goes there instead of over here. So trying to recovers that and say, okay, is this a priority? Where's this falling? What we need to do? Um, and how is this the best use of our time? Um, put it another way, not every issue should be treated the same. So when you present with things, try to mentally go through, and this is not just the board, it's the community, this is all of us internally as well. Employees are not immune to this. It's much easier to do the small thing in front of you because you get something done. Uh, but the hard, big things are what we really need to focus on, so we can achieve things with stock. Um, being advocates for the town, um, to residents. So when a resident comes to us and says something. Instead of saying, yes, I'll call Eric, yes, I'll call Steven, yes, I'll call Robert, be like, okay, I hear you, I understand you. I will talk to them, but just so you know, this may not be a priority for them right away. It may take a few days. We'll tell the right people, but let them know that'd be the first line of defense, so we can, I, I'm the same way, so I can say to them, yes, I understand. I know Steven is really busy, he's been taking three days to get back to you. Like, that's a timeline, and we'll fill that timeline, but helping us. Be that first line of defense can be very helpful. Um, what we're doing this soon is for the boards to direct the committees and commissions we have. Um, and then hold them accountable with their goals. We have a lot of volunteers who dedicate their time. They're very smart, they're very active, they wanna help, they are just floating out in space. Without any real guidance on what to do. Um, and that is a, um. A benefit we should tap into much more and say, hey, we want you to go do these three things, report back to us in two months. We want you to spend your time doing this, um, and really use these boards as something helpful. For the town, not just something that as a meeting we have to go staff and be burdened by or complain about, but actually how can we use them to the best of their abilities? Uh, so once we have a schedule of meetings, we'll invite the chair of every committee commission that exists in Woodstock. Um, I'm sure I'll forget about a few of them, but so people remind me, have them come, they're gonna discuss what they do, what they wanna do. Then it'll be on the boards to say to them, great, here's what we wanna do this year, here's what we wanna do next year. And then hold them accountable each year and make sure they're doing those things and doing the work we want them to do. Um, planning. Um, so planning in the terms of Woodstock's future has not really been done in Woodstock. Um, this has helped create, um, the housing issue we have, it's not ours the only reason. Um, but we have not invested in any kind of form of smart development, so as the house is cresting, it's worse and worse and worse. And we're not doing anything, we're even further, further behind than where we should be. Um, so a question of boards, I'm gonna have, want you to have the guys answer in the next few months. Um, is what do we want Woodstock to be? Um, and how we want that to be. So are we okay with Woodstock being in place for mostly tourists, second homeowners? Um, and if that's the case, that's totally fine, but we may not need a lot of planning. Because we can say, okay, we'll just do some zoning and have, you know, people buy the second, third homes in Woodstock, and that's all we want, we're happy with that. Um, if that's not the case, then we need to have a conversation about what to do here to help. Do some developments, help get young families in here, um, and planning is necessary in that. Also necessary, I, if we're gonna do that, is to understand that there may be front, a cost upfront. That we'll have to pay, knowing we won't get a benefit to down the road. So an example of hypothetically, um, developing a place where we get eight houses, right? We'll have to put money upfront to do that work, but in the long term, we'll grow the grand list, we'll get tax property. And we'll make more money back in the long run, but there may be opportunities, we're gonna have to put some money upfront first. Uh, what benefits planning, um, helps us align municipal resources. Um, so by planning to acquire the water company, we can now use that to, um, help. Increase the water flow, have more housing, um, but also just reopen a road, and the sewer pipe's bad, and the water pipe's bad. We fix it both at once because we own both of them. Um, we're gonna, uh, allocate our budgets and our time kind of to that planning. So we know where we're going after, we say, okay, we need to fund this, we need to spend time on this. Without planning and the planning zoning, but also the planning in general, um, we kind of, again, we're kind of lost on what we should be doing. Um, it helps us to increase the grand list, right? If we're doing smart development, we're getting new houses in here. They're paying property taxes, which means more income comes into the municipality. Um, and we don't have to raise taxes on other people because the new people are paying those, that cost. Um, helps the capital plans. If we know where we wanna be in five years, we can make a solid capital plan to kind of follow that up. Right? So if we don't know where we're going, we're kind of doing capital plans, willy-nilly throwing money here and there, but if we actually have an idea of what we wanna do. That'll help. Um, cause blueprint for the future. Again, if we have some plans, we know where we wanna be, um, that's gonna create. A, a, a path for us to follow, uh, to make sure we get the things done that we wanna do. Um, allows us to be smarter and make more impactful decisions. Again, having a plan in place, we know what we're gonna do, we allocate funds, we allocate our time, uh, we're doing things more efficient that way. So, with all that said, and those questions linger in the air, um. Slight detour into planning zoning. Uh, we currently have two staff members there. They, and they staff six committees right now. Um. In conversation with them, you're probably talking about twenty hours a week goes to these committees. That's agendas, that's booklets, that's minutes, that's prepping for the meetings, that's work after the meetings, that's writing a decision, that's all that stuff. So if we want to do planning in the future, in real planning, uh, we have to have a conversation of what we want that office to look like. Um, so we can reorg some of the committees. Uh, there's some committees that are advisory, can we make them. Be less involved, uh, can we have them staff themselves, so we're not spending time and money doing minutes. For them and their, and, and generate booklets. Um, could we condense them, so we don't have as many committees to give more time to staff? Um, that's a way to kind of give time back without adding more staff, is you kind of give them more time. Um, permanent software is the third time I said it, I'm gonna keep on saying it. Uh, it's a benefit knowing to plan zoning. My office, but also police and fire, who gives permits, it's a way to kind of streamline a lot of things. Um, and the question comes down to, again, that I'll ask the board to answer in the coming months. Is this, is economic development a priority for the boards? Um, is new housing a goal of the boards? If it is, then we have to take steps to get there. Um, if it's not, then with a totally different conversation, well, what's us gonna be? If we're gonna kind of keep the status quo and rely on the current population to pay increased taxes. Um, as costs continue to rise. So we have to answer this question and then decide, once we answer that question, where we wanna go. Um, and then long-term, what's the next ten, twenty years of Woodstock? What does it look like? Where we want to be? Um, again, that will allow us to kind of shape how we want this place to be. If it's a board decision that we want development, um. And we'll all keep things the way they are, then great, we can plan out how we have to spend money the next twenty years. Um, but these conversations kind of need to happen. Uh, local businesses, um, so a great thing about Woodstock is we have the village. Small, cute stores, um, very engaged, active business owners. Uh, we have two of them on the board. Um, we know this owner as well, but not in the village, but still there, um. I've had numerous conversations with business owners, um, some business owners who are in Woodstock now, some who have left. Uh, some who refuse to come into Woodstock. Um, and what they say to me is they get the feeling that they're not welcome in Woodstock. Um, that the zoning laws prohibit, prohibit them from being what they wanna do. That the government here is quote-unquote making things more difficult for them. Um, that is what I'm hearing from a lot of people. Um, when I moved here, I was in a different town, talking to a business owner, told him, I'm so excited, I'm, I'm a new manager of Woodstock. And he ran a thirty-minute tirade about why we'd never do business in Woodstock. He owns two very successful businesses in another town that would fit perfectly in Woodstock. He, I don't think will ever come here. Uh, I talked to another business owner who had left, uh, Woodstock recently. Not knowing this, I just said, oh yeah, the town manager of Woodstock, and twenty minutes later, he's still yelling at me about things that happened ten years ago, and I was like. My fault. Um, so there's that sense in the community. Um, top of that, they have high rents. And absolutely landlords, they don't have landlords who live in the community who have a general, um, engagement and them being successful. Housing for employees, um, talk to any business owner, the first thing they'll say is housing, housing, housing. Um, I saw our business owner two weeks ago, I was dropping my dog off at puppy camp. I said, hey, how you doing? He said, hey, how you doing? He's like, yep, need more housing for employees. And I was like, it's seven thirty, can I just drop my dog off and, you know, get, get to work? Um, but you know, that's what he's thinking at seven thirty in the morning on a Thursday. You know, the moment he sees me, housing, housing, housing. Um, the tourist first residence issue, you know, they have to cater to tourists because that's where the money comes from, but. Not also shun residents who are here year-round. Um, then the lack of tourists. So what do they do when it's mud season or stick season? Uh, when people aren't around, how are they gonna make it their business so they can be here year-round? Uh, and also have full-time employees year-round too. So I think we need to consider the importance tourism has on the community, the role it plays in Woodstock, um, and why people do come here. Um, we have to work with and listen to the business owners. So what do they need? Uh, what do they want? Are they providing housing, uh, maybe parking, uh, but what else do they really need? How can we help them? We know they need providing housing, we know they need parking solutions, but what can we actually do to help them? I don't think we have a solution, as we did, we had it, but we need to think of these things. There are way too many empty storefronts in Woodstock for what Woodstock is, um, and we need to find a way to fix that. Um, but there it is, I already said that. Um, and then making, uh, owning a business was, was like attractive. We want people to wanna be here. We want people clamoring to get into these storefronts and open businesses, and we want them to be successful and get here. We don't want them being, that's too much work, I'm gonna go down the road, or I'm gonna go somewhere else. We want them to be here, having successful businesses. We want to make someone go from the inn, all the way down to East End Park and have a great time going to, uh, different shops and stores. And really exploring Woodstock. Um, so, um. So, um, and just on that, um, I'm gonna be working with planning zoning, uh, we're going to be creating or hosting a um, business owner forum. Somewhere at the next month, where I'm gonna invite all businesses um, to the town hall, round table, just let them talk to me about what they want, what they need, their issues, their concerns, in a format where hopefully they'll feel comfortable speaking up to me, and because it's me, I can't legislate anything, so they won't be any asked, they can just kinda speak freely to me, and I'm hoping that's kinda our first step to figure out where we, where we can go. Next, um, the village. So at the risk of making more people upset, um, the village budget is about one point five million dollars for this year starting July one. Well, seven hundred thousand dollars of that is property tax, um, the rest of about eight fifty is from local revenue. Um, of that eight fifty, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand are thirty percent of all revenue that the village receives. Comes from the town for the police contract where um, the village supplies police coverage for the, for the entire town. I want you to picture in your head for a second, a scenario where the town decides not to contract with the village for police services. What happens then? Thirty percent of the village revenue is gone in a second, that's forty-three thousand dollars gone. Talking to Chief Swanson, he assumed that would be two to three officers gone, and then it cut a service from twenty-four seven service to something like Monday through Friday, seven to seven. Um, so a massive chunk of the village's revenue hinges on the town and the contract we have in place. I'm not saying a town's gonna do anything, and I don't, I would advocate that you do, but that is a risk for the village of so much of your budget hinges on this one thing that could be taken away um, relatively easily and, and quickly. On that, we focus on the police. We just passed a new police contract that was signed last year by trustees, a three-year contract. The last year, the contract FY twenty-six, we purposely put in a, an extra bump to kinda get the police salaries closer to surrounding communities to kinda keep that retention and recruitment going. And that was purposeful, we had a list of what other um, towns and cities make, and so we kinda tried to compare to that. With no other changes to the village budgets, so not including my salary that's allocated there, or planning zone or anything else. That salary increase is gonna be about an eight point five percent increase for taxes for the village in that budget here. So if no revenue comes in, no new revenue, nothing else, we're looking at eight and a half percent increase for the village just based on that. Higher when you consider rising cost of goods and services, but also my office salary is split, was it Robert's? Term side of my salary, twenty-five percent planning zoning, twenty percent of finance, um, is also in the village budget as well. So we're looking at a massive increase on the village side just for that. Why bring that up? Cause even with that increase we gave the police department to catch them up, we're already behind again. Bedford is already two dollars more an hour than we are. Windsor is what, seven hour, seven uh, dollars more an hour than we are. Other communities are much higher, the moment we signed, other people signed even higher. They have retention bonuses, they have sign bonuses, they're paying more per hour. Uh, so even taking on this financial um, task of trying to get to the, the place close. We're still not close again, because what's happening out there is police salaries are going through the roof, it's so hard to get people. So this is not obviously ideal uh, for the village budgets. On top of that, uh, we had the art today, um, the village unsolicited fund balance is under eight thousand dollars. Well, undesigned fund balance is, is basically money that is not assigned to anything that sits in your account and can be used for emergencies, or if you're over budget, or if you're in a deficit, it's there to kind of provide some protection. What it means is now, over the course of X amount of years, we've had more revenue than we had expenses. Last year, undesigned fund balance was zero. Year before that, it was in deficits. So this is better than we were, but it's not great, I think this year the village will probably add maybe eight, ten thousand more dollars to this account. But that's all we have, the village is a safety net. So there is no, if there is an emergency cost on the village side, there's no money there to really help it, unless we dip into capital reserves to protect that. The undesigned fund balance for the town is one point seven million dollars. So that's, the town has a safety net, they have, they have cautions, if we, if we need to buy something, I know there's money there if we need, if we need to, but comes to the village, there just isn't any wiggle room. And I'm running low on battery, almost done. Have that already? Um, and then the village budget, because it relies on a small tax base, the appetite for a large increases is not there, because they're also being taxed by the town. So the village is paying taxes, two different sets of taxes, so the appetite for a large increase to kinda get us to a safe place may not be feasible. So it comes to my question is, how financially secure can the village be in the future? I don't know that answer yet, but these things that go over gives me concern about where we can be in the future. If we don't have more development in the village to increase the grand list, uh, or if we don't find revenue sources to help increase or match the normal services that are going up. We're giving employees three percent COLAs, inflation's seven, eight percent, right? So we're not really even matching what's out there. So this is the second and last slide, uh, so one, this is again, these are the bigger questions that I think we need to ask and look into. What are ways that we can increase revenue without passing all that cost on to businesses and residents who have already bear the brunt of a lot of this in the past? So we have to find new ways to get more revenue in the town, in, in the village. Is that increasing grand list, is it finding clever ways to raise more money? We have to figure that out. Second, I think we should investigate what it'll look like if we move the police department under the town governments. That's what we did with DPW a while back, is that a financial benefit to everyone, is it not? We should look into it, we should investigate, we have to ask these questions so we know what the answers are before we do anything. Going through what we just looked like, this could be a way to share the cost over to the town. Um, and then have a larger tax break, a larger tax base cover that cost, but something we should look into. Finally, um, the M word. Merger, um, I've been here for sixty months, uh, this has been talked about since I've been here. The last time a report was done was, I believe, two thousand and five, um, and Jill Davies sent it to me today, so I appreciate it. Um, but we should look into, is this a good idea, is it a bad idea? And not just the things we always say, uh, to the last five, ten, or wherever the case may be. But actually spend time to look into the cost benefit of this versus what we will lose. So would it help? Yes or no? Uh, is it feasible, can we actually do this, is it a way to, to merge the two communities in a way that makes sense? If so, how will we do, what's the timeline, what would it take to do it, what's the cost associated with it? What would, would it look like after, so if a merger happened, what is Woodstock then? What are the boards like, what are the residents like, how's everything set up? And then is there a way, if the merger happened, for the village to remain protected or somewhere the same? Can, can there be zoning laws to protect that district, um, or not, things to look into? Someone could probably answer that question now. So I want to clear in the email I sent to you, I'm not saying, I'm saying we do a merger tomorrow, I'm not saying we move the police department to the town tomorrow, I'm not saying we do any of them right now. I think these are large questions that are gonna dictate the future of Woodstock. And I think we have to at least talk about them and investigate them, and so we can make the best decision for Woodstock, whatever that is. And that's a job that I think the board should look into and, and discuss, um, and I'm happy to help in any, any way I can. So in conclusion, um, there's a reason why everyone here lives in Woodstock, there's a reason why I moved up here and took this job. We love Woodstock, we wanna see it succeed, we want it to see thriving, we want it to be happy, we want people who have kids, have the kids here and have to raise the kids, and we want people to come and visit. I love nothing more than having friends and family come up and say, let's go to Woodstock for the day, you know, I can't believe you work here, uh, so we want that to happen. But there are challenges ahead, and we have to be willing to have the tough and uncomfortable conversations, so we make the right decision for Woodstock. And I think if we do that, um, we can make the municipality of Woodstock as great as the image of Woodstock is as itself, right? So we do the right things, we work smartly, we make smart decisions, we ask the right questions, we have the uncomfortable conversations like I'm doing right now. Then we can make the right decision for Woodstock going forward. And almost on cue, I lost my power. So the last page was um, comments, questions, with me looking very nervous in the picture. So I wanted to get this presentation, um, oh, thank you Stephen, um, because I've been here long enough to, to see what's going on, um, and I do think we need to at least decide on a lot of these tough questions, because it's gonna dictate the next two, three years of Woodstock. And so with that said, I'm happy to work with the boards on all these, I'm happy to take questions, comments. Um, or I'm happy for us to schedule department head meetings and go home and get a good night's sleep.
Oh, it's a great six-minute presentation there.
I was saying, you need to be short and, and quick, I wouldn't offer very, very long.
But the great part, I was serious about the great part. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of things that people talk about amongst ourselves, and it's to have somebody say it out loud on a PowerPoint presentation is helpful, and it's uh, you know, the first, first thing is admitting you have a problem, right? That's the first step.
Uh, I think talking about it, you know, I think talking about, like, we don't have to say, let's do a merger tomorrow, but I think going through the cost benefit of it, actually investigating it, talking about it, um, talking about all these things, the problem of what we want Woodstock to be. You know, there are people who say, uh, we need five hundred houses five years ago, right? Do we want that? Does, does the town wanna work towards that? If, if, if so, we have to stop talking about it and start putting things in place to do it. If we don't wanna do that, then we have to come to the realization that we're looking at a tax bracket that's small, that's not growing, knowing that costs continue to go up. So how do we wanna manage that going forward? That's a very difficult, that's another difficult conversation. You know, it's just as difficult as telling someone to put an apartment building behind their house is saying like, okay, we may be in trouble, what can we do to solve this issue? So I think it's, it will be all of us to kinda start doing that.
What do you see, I know this is kind of a broad question, but what do you see as the first three things we should?
Um, good question. One, I think the first thing we should do is have, is have the board set goals. Have the board set goals, and I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and tell the boards what, what goals you should set, that should be up to you, I'm happy to give advice and everything else. Um, but I asked, I had a question in the PowerPoint, is, I think one of the major questions is do we want development? And if we want development, what development do we want? And where, where do we want that to go? Cause if the answer is yes, then we start working towards there, we're already behind, it's gonna take five, six, seven years to get anything done. And so we're already way behind the ball on that. If we don't want that, then what do we want Woodstock to be? I think that's the first question, I was saying dictates kinda where we go from there. I think the second um, thing we should do is I think keep talking about this, you know, I think we have a tendency to have this conversation and then move on from it and not revisit it for six, seven months. Um, I think these should be, as we set our goals for the boards, these are things we should be talking about. When you have the committees, commissions in front of you, these are questions you should ask them. If you, when you have the EDC, when you have the finance committee, when you have the planning commission, right? Ask their opinion, get their feedback, ask them these questions. Let them tell you what they think, let them see how they can help, um, or what they've seen, you know, there might be, a committee has looked into this for a while, and they have that expertise to kind of give to us. I think the third thing is, um, the third thing I think for the select board is I'm going to come uh, sometime soon with a request to use some money from undesigned fund balance. The undesigned fund balance, um, to purchase some more technology, um, and a few other things, so that would be my third request, I think that's something we can do quickly and get that in, in, in the system and see how that benefits us, cause that's the more technology we have, and we're not asking for, you know, AI or anything, but we can then figure out what we're, we're still lacking. You know, is a permanent software, as a case, you know, gonna solve a staffing issue? I don't know, but we're never gonna know until we try. Permanent software is cheaper, you can get rid of it quicker, um, and it's just a great way to say, okay, we have this now, and now you know what? We may only need one more staff member, or now that we have this, we're realizing that these two people have twenty more hours a week on their hands, and now they can go do other things. Um, so those would be my
Frank, did you have anything?
No, thanks.
I was just gonna say, this was so comprehensive and pretty excoriating, frankly. But I'm so glad you're at the helm, and I'm eager to really help us all move forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Schedule some more meetings, guys.
Yeah, okay, so um, the select board has a meeting next Tuesday at six. Um, I don't know if there's enough time for the department heads to get a presentation together, but I can ask them. I always think like ten minutes per department, like uh, five to ceremony presentation on their own, and then a few minutes for questions. Uh, so we're talking about police, fire, uh, planning zoning, uh, right now there's no director of public works. Um, so we're probably talking about five or six departments, uh, that come in front of the board, so we probably do it in an hour. Um, if that's a possibility, um, I'm also not against doing during the day, so the department heads don't have to stay late, that's a possibility as well. But I think the select board meeting would be the first opportunity, um, but we also look at other options as well.
Next one, more discussion.
Yeah, so the, the next one, the department heads coming in front of us with uh, what they want their goals to be for the next year. So I can't think if we give an hour for five or six departments, that should be enough, if we did a meeting at five to six, if that's possible. If not, we can look at meetings next week, or when we don't have meetings scheduled, and do a, a separate meeting.
I think the five o'clock on the eighteen.
Justin?
I won't be.
Are you on?
I'll, I'll be gone next week.
I can do Zooms.
Will there be something so that Jeffrey can get caught up?
Yeah, I mean, there'll be recorded, but also would it be the department heads giving like a five-minute presentation of what their department does, what they want to do in next year? With the budget they currently have, or is there nothing changed, and the board's asking a few questions. I'll let them do, like, I mean, David Green will probably just come up and speak, I assume Chief Swanson will as well, Steven Fire, however, PowerPoint, um, Robert, I'm not sure. Um, whatever they're comfortable with, you know? Yeah.
But if we had a format that the questions were asked to every, every group, the same questions?
They can be, you know, but I mean, some of it's like, I think when we talk about, say, planning zoning, I'm probably gonna have ideas to want to do more planning and potentially more, more zoning, where the fire department EMS is probably gonna be fun saving lives. You know, like I said, like, the goal, the goal there are different, you know, they may have more capital project um, conversations. You know, I know, um, they're talking about getting new fire trucks, that's probably his big thing of how we can, how we can do that. Um, so it may be a little different depending on the department, you know, and someone like Robert's only been here for seven or eight months. Or not have as much of in-depth knowledge, as Steven's been here for over two years, so it'll be a little fluid, I guess.
Frank, does the eighteen-five make sense for you?
Yeah, that works.
Don't be on Zoom.
Okay, and Jeffrey, you're out.
I can check up.
Okay, yeah, I can, I know I'm always happy to follow up.
All right, I had to get back to my computer. That works.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, the twenty-fifth for another, now be the committees and commissions in front of the boards. That's our, the next, the next Tuesday. Uh, whatever. Let me just make sure there's no other meetings. I don't think how many committees we have, though. Yeah, that's one of the problems. Yeah, yeah, so we do five to six thirty.
That's the twenty-fifth.
Yes, so I can, I can let the chairs of those boards know, so that'll give them two weeks. Department heads should be okay with a week.
Five to six thirty? Frank? Second with you?
Yeah, it looks good for me too. The twenty-fifth, correct? Yeah.
It's fine for me.
The only thing I'll say is, you know, keep looking at personal policy. We're, we're short on time, so the more we look at individually and get feedbacks, and when we meet, we can kind of.
When are we talking about personal policy?
As much as we can.
Oh, when?
So, the SLIP board is going to talk about it in their meeting next week. We have time after the department heads will talk about it quickly, but we may have to schedule another meeting for that as well.
And you don't want to schedule that today?
Yeah, let's see how quickly the meeting on. Looks like that for us.
Any other business to come before the trustees? Okay, next, I would make a motion for the trustees to adjourn it. Ever say aye? Any opposed? Question carries?
We adjourn?